Put it shut it. All this new security, I don't know how to treat it.
It really is. So.
That's all the way to the sun.
Yeah.
They're drawing like fishing.
Oh, that definitely.
Versus.
Another every day.
It's on my camera.
There was a.
Well, we do.
So.
Oh, yeah.
Sound very good.
We got the most.
Bonkers.
He didn't.
Lots of like.
They let us tell them they are closed.
This is the.
Charging.
To yourself.
I'm only calling.
One more now.
This is why. Um, you know.
Just what I say.
Every sentence. And I touch it all the way down and there's a. This really. What time is it? It's a lot with this. Does something? And he doesn't. He knows my phone better than I do.
Okay.
Ask for a shot then. Yes. Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Is that your meeting?
Yeah, no way for Paul.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Wait on Paul when we'll start.
Hey. Gee. I don't want you to know if I did it right. Who's that?
I'm in. Okay, six thirty, uh, follow the order, the seven, uh, September eight, eighth, twenty twenty five, Lebanon City Council meeting. Uh, roll call, please.
Belkey.
Here.
Bennett.
Here.
Cornish.
Here.
Pharaoh.
Here.
Marcinkowski.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
And Washington.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
And the United States. Believe in God, or what you say is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Now need a motion and a second for to approve the omnibus agenda. So. Second.
Who was that? Do you want to get more? Bennett?
Yes.
Cornish?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Marcinkowski?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Belkey?
Yes.
That's it. And next we have a proclamation from Constitution Week, the city of Lebanon, Illinois. Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty five marks the two hundred and thirty eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to afford official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary. And to the patriotic celebrations that was will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America. This will be the September seventeenth through twenty third is Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I Charlie running by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of city Lebanon. City Lebanon do hereby proclaim this week of September seventeenth through twenty third is Constitution Week. And ask our citizens reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty seven. By vigilantly protecting this region's guarantee to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And witness thereof, I have a hearing to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Lebanon to fix this. Eighth day of September. In the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty five. He was testing. Yeah. You always want to go up there, what are we gonna do?
I was kind of there.
Yeah.
Thank you for that affirmation.
You want. If you want copy.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do it.
I'll let you hold it.
Let me hold it over here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There you go. We appreciate it very much. Thank you for.
Okay, now we'll move on to Brent's plan commission report.
Ben. I invited a couple of the other members here, but I guess they couldn't make it.
Um, understood.
Uh, so we're, I think we're, before I start, I think we need to consider some procedural changes. One of those might be when the plan commission meetings are held. Like when you get up against a deadline like this, it's crazy. We, we finished Thursday night and we're expected to have a report on Monday. I have to do the minutes, lead the meeting, try to capture what's going on. And there's not always time to review with anybody else, so. Yeah, I think, you know, thi- this one may be not as much a problem because we had two kind of two sessions of a hearing, so. Uh, but it's, you know, I can't write the report till you're done, right? So, um, it, it is a, it's an issue that, that we'll talk about at our next meeting. I don't know that there's any statutory requirement. I think the requirement is that we have the hearing, the recommendation and get it to the council as, you know, as quickly as possible. So we might want to look instead of, uh, the first Thursday, maybe a different Thursday, just have to look at calendars. But it might always fall, right? Or and maybe the attorney can answer this question, but you know, can it be the second, you know? Like ten days or something, so if there's a council meeting in three days, we have another week or two to.
Well, probably part of the problem with this one is because Monday was the first day.
Right, yeah.
So.
So we had a calendar.
Yeah.
But so, but I mean, we could redo it to where it's. The, maybe the first Thursday after the second Monday or something. Yeah, before we do anything, I'd like to talk to the rest of the members and say, I don't want to create a, a big problem. But I know it's a problem for me when I'm trying to write a report three days before with a weekend being two of those days. So, uh, anyway, so we have, so there's a narrative, page two is where the recommendations are. Uh, the rest is sort of minutes. Uh, but I think there's, you know, you know, there's a couple of things I want to say first. We had two meetings, there were, we didn't follow the, uh, maximum requirement or min- maximum allowable in here in the first meeting. Thank you to the school for letting us use the gym, worked great. Uh, the recording will be out there, just a couple of technical difficulties, but they did record it. Um, there were forty five or fifty people there, um, and they were able to spread out here. Um, we probably didn't follow strictly the five minute rule either. Uh, there was, you know, for the most part, but there were some, there was also some conversation. So obviously it was a, um, you know, a passionate, uh, meeting. Um, I, I would thank, uh, besides the school, Sylvia, the technology coordinator director, did a great job going the extra mile, so I'll take care of her. Uh, and then the plan commission, just thanks for, it's a, you know, thankless job sometimes. Uh, and then the good input we got from the citizens. I mean, that's, that's what we're really here for, so. So anyway, um, so the first rec- and, and the, the last recommendation is actually the one that, you know, it has to do with the current request. But there's three things and, and I don't, you know, it's not like you can act just immediately, but, but the first one is. It is clear from the testimony and the history that we need to do something with the first small community home, okay? It, I think, is, has led to the opposition to this one because it's been a disaster from an administrative standpoint. And when I say that, um, I, whatever we can legally do, we shouldn't, un- you know, there's only a number of things you can do. But let's not be, let's not be too passive with that because, and let me just read this. Um, you know, it said ten nine oh five Fallow Field, which has operated as a small community home, which is defined in our, uh, ordinance. Uh, for as far as we can tell, more than ten years, it's uncertain whether a valid SUP was ever issued. Think it was, but we're not, we're not sure. Uh, or if it remains valid after the sale because normally SUPs are only good for the requestor, right? Um, so there's a number of problems with it besides the public safety issues. Okay, and I know there haven't been arrests, but I, I, I don't, I know that's how you define it, but I can tell you from the testimony. Um, there's been people in other people's homes, you know, that's more than trespassing. So, uh, you can listen to the recording when it goes live. Um, but anyway, so I, we need to, we need to get on that, but that's a separate matter from this one, right? Um, it's related, but it's separate. And I think that led to a lot of the, I mean, that's where the passion came from, let's face it. If it's run properly, you won't know it's there, right? But then we also were told by two people at the meeting, there was one on Harmon Drive for a while that nobody knew about. It's not there now. I don't know anything about that and I live very close there. Um, so I don't know if it's true or not, but just the fact that I, I, it's believable to me at this point. It's believable to us that that may have, may have happened. So anyway, that, that's for, that's more for the, you know, it's not an ordinance or it's not a change. It's just, we need to take whatever enforcement action we can. Um, the, the second, and so the second recommendation, um, is related to this issue of small community homes. Um, can't do it, uh, this submission for the, for the request was already done. So you can't change, quote, change the rules in the middle of the game. But there are things you can do to limit clustering of these. So somebody can't buy the whole subdivision and make it, you know, homes like that. Uh, and so I think to the extent of we're recommending and there, we've talked to a couple of folks, some say a thousand, some say thirteen hundred feet. But it does appear to be legal if you go through the right channels. Swansea seems to have done some things in this, with this subject, so that might be a good resource. But we would like to see that issue on the ordinance committee, uh, docket. I don't know that the plan commission needs to do anymore. I mean, it's our recommendation to go down that path. Um, you know, smarter minds than us will figure out what can be done. Um, but that, that, because, you know, when you take a neighborhood and you fill it up with those, that, I mean, it's, it's allowable in SR one. But there obviously needs to be reasonable restrictions on having too much clustering. So that's recommendation number two. Um, now recommendation number three, um, is, is one that, uh, as we were going through, um, we, we've discussed this for quite a while, but, uh, special use permits, they're only good for the, the requesting party. Um, but we have put time limits on them, or at least the, you know, probationary may not be the right word. But, uh, when we, we believe that all special use permits in the future should have a time limit on it where we, at least it pops up and we can say, all right, were there any public safety issues? Were there any, for any public, that goes for anything. For instance, a home that is running a, a business in a home, right? Can't have signs, parking, all that stuff. Well, what if there's a bunch of violations to that, but it was a permanent SUP? Well, then you have to take a little more legal action. If you at least had a review process, if someone gets a special use permit and let's say you make it a year or two years, uh, in two years, if there's been nothing, then it just would roll over for the next two year period. That's a lot to chew on, but I do think that as long, and you know, it would, it, it could apply to small community homes as well, as long as it's for all. You know, we're treating everyone the same. So that is recommendation number three to, again, look at that from an ordinance standpoint and the zoning ordinance to. And we've put restrictions on them before, like the horse, the horses down there north of town. We said, I think, three years the first time and it expired, so they had to come back. I wouldn't go through all that, make them pay a fee. If, you know, you have a little database spreadsheet that pops up, you know, it's August, here's all the SUPs that we've issued that are still active that we know of. Uh, and just, okay, has there been any complaints? Any reason we need to look at a business plan or any changes? Uh, and then it just rolls over. Um, so that's recommendation number three. Um, so recommendation number four is the actual, uh, request uh, at ten nine twenty nine Silvan Vista to operate a small community home. Um, and the plan commission voted seven to one to recommend conditional approval of that request by envision with the following conditions to the extent allowed. Um, off, off street parking signs, you know, the normal typical things, but what we were, you know, just to give you a little color for how the meeting went, first there was a motion to deny it. And we had some more discussion that was withdrawn, we've got a second that was withdrawn. Um, our fear was that, 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 that's the easy emotional thing to do, right? But if we did that, then, and we didn't voice our concerns about conditions that should be put on it, then that might get lost in the shuffle. So it was a, a approval, sa- recommendation for approval, seven to one. Um, and I, I have some bullets there of things that we really feel strongly about, off street parking and signs. Uh, maximum one resident per bedroom, uh, twenty four hour supervision. Uh, and, and specifically say it's issued for the purpose of housing intellectually developmental, uh, disabilities. That's a, a true term. And that's what the testimony from Envision, who didn't show up the second meeting? You know, there's no requirement for that and there was some concern voiced, but, um, that, that's not the plan commission's purview. Uh, but that, that is what they stated at the first meeting that it was for, and that means a certain thing. So that should be in. Uh, and then, uh, subject to all the occupancy and code, you know, and enforcement that we would do with anyone else that, uh, owns a house, does, you know, rents, whatever, um, there is, when there's changes made to that, that roster, um, you get, there's another inspection, so, um. So that's the recommendation. Um, I can answer as many questions as I can remember, but that, that's the recommendation. I guess that's to the ordinance committee or is it to the full council, I don't remember, but that's, uh, that's my report. That makes sense, the, the minutes are there, but I just went over the, the meat of it. And I appreciate you letting me go first so I can go play baseball.
I think George volunteered, so I'm sticking a stand up over there.
Yeah, yeah, it'll come to ordinance because we'll have to write ordinance.
Yeah, I figured that.
Yeah.
And we, we can support, you know, if you have like clarification questions, there's three or four folks on the plan commission that were pretty well versed on this.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be researching.
Yeah.
Look at, have to research because in other communities and what they're doing with it.
Yeah.
But just some things to clarify, inspections, to do inspections every time they return over residents, that is going to be very cumbersome. So would you be happy if we modeled it somewhat after the, uh, uh, bed and breakfast ordinance that has periodic inspections?
Yes, as long as it's followed through on during that period, yes.
That'll be the easiest way to do it, is keep track of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're, they're required to be inspected, I think it's every year. I'm trying to look it up, just my fingers aren't moving fast enough.
Yeah. Well, trust me, I did a lot of typing, thinking, talking, phone calls. Um, and as many of us on the plan commission did.
Right, but I think that's what we, I would be recommending, at least that one piece, that there being a periodic inspection. And period will be determined by other ordinances or even our own, uh, ordinance on, uh, bed and breakfast. Because basically that's what that is, is an extended bed and breakfast.
Mm-hmm.
With other additional, uh, capabilities, but that would be the closest thing we already have on the books.
And I would, uh, Mike Taggo, who's on the plan commission, his wife has run these homes, so he's very familiar with this issue, so he might be a good, I couldn't get him here tonight because it was last minute, but.
I actually don't object, I don't object to homes and there is.
Go on, no, no, nobody does.
There is a need for them, as long as, uh, because of the IDD issue, uh, they have to be properly supervised to ensure their safety and the safety of the community. And that would be the, that's the, that's the primary, uh, goal. Their needs are met and ours are maintained. Luke, you gonna say something?
Um, the difficulty here is, is that anything we do with regard to these has to be identical to what we would do with regard to a single, like a regular, we traditional defined family or what we have as a, defined as a non-related family. Um, anything that we do is different from one of those to this. It, it has been found, uh, to be a violation of the ADA. So like the thousand feet, um, that's recommendation number two. There is case law out there that says that is a violation of the ADA. I know there are towns and cities that have done it. I'm just going to tell you, it has been found to be a violation. Um, the problem with the other one, the Pharaoh, the Fallow Field, that's regulated by the state. We don't have the ability to invade into.
But if they don't have a, a valid special use permit anymore.
The question is whether or not the requirement for valid, for a special use permit is even in itself legal as it's technically treating these as different. Uh, right now, they've, in historically, they've been willing to go through this process. However, they have started pushing back. And there is more and more case law on that these types of restrictions and things like that are in violation of the ADA. So, uh, just so you all know, one of the big ones is Springfield got sued for this. And it was a big, like a lot of the case law comes from out of Springfield, so not Chicago, not one of the big Cook County cities, Springfield. And Springfield eventually got hit with a fine of about sixty thousand dollars in additional interest and stuff like that for another forty thousand dollars. So that's a hundred grand that they got hit on the case for that. They're doing something similar to this by trying to regulate these. So just be aware, anything we do that is any different than what we would do for the family, the normal traditional family that moves in, it could look, could be scrutinized. So that's such a caution I give all of you.
And, and I, I guess I would say, I, I understand, I, I deal with lawyers all the time and that's the risk. I wouldn't be, I mean, there's certain hills you don't want to die on, right? But I think, uh, I think I would look, I would look really hard before I just died on that hill of uh, clustering, because does the law really going to allow a whole subdivision to be bought up and make, I mean, play it to absurdity, and I'm not saying that isn't the right legal answer. I'm not, I'm not the lawyer, uh, but I have to supervise lawyers, uh, and argue with them all the time. Um, but I, I do think that, you know, uh, if others have, um, have done that, and then I think for the most part, what these companies do is they prey on small communities, right?
It's easy.
And, you know, I, so maybe it's a, it's a, a battle that communities go together to do, it's not trying to stop it, it's just let's, you know, we talked about constitution earlier and freedom and rights. Well, the rights are gone for a homeowner and the whole subdivisions, they go away, so I'll, I'll get off my soapbox.
Well, hold on, hold on. So, does, the, the one is there now, do they even have a special use permit? And then two, I'm not in favor of it, but, uh, the twenty four seven su- supervision, that's not happening at the other.
Correct.
The people aren't, the staff ain't doing their job. Unfortunately, the police hands are tied, you got people barricading themselves in other people's homes. I'll tell you right now, you barricade yourself at my house, you're getting two to the chest, one in the head. I don't care, I'll tell you to your face.
Man, we heard that, I didn't make the comment, you did, but I heard that.
I tell anybody.
Multiple occasions.
Do they not have a special use permit? Do we not doubt, so?
Do they? They probably do not, but the question is who's, like, are we going to cite them and then are we going to fight them because then we will get sued.
That's fine.
We'll be in the same boat. Well, I would start by somebody calling the, the regulators and get, because the, the, the people that are in there run safe.
Yes.
That's where I would start.
Proper reaction response there is it has to go through the states because the state's the one that regulates it. So they're not, I, I understand that the state's likely not going to listen. But that's the only legal avenue we have for that. I just know the police chief's hands are tied when it comes to doing things to these individuals when they're getting out and breaking into cars, doing vandalism, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Can't you sue the, can't you sue the management company for allowing it and not taking care of their own people that they're in charge of?
Right.
I mean, I, I'd counter sue. Not today.
I, if you had property damage.
Yeah.
That you, that's where you'd have to go.
Yeah, you have a class act.
You, you, wasn't it? Not a, not a this.
Well, city.
So like with, with the city though, I mean, for one of the gentleman there on the board made a really great point on the fact that as soon as the second offense happened, we should have fit down on the and, and started, uh, tying up everything, since obviously we haven't, which is a huge problem. Um, but where, where are we at now? What can, what can we do? Because the, um, it, it's, it's out of control for one and, uh, it, it needs to stop and we need to, we need to somehow address it. So really, like, what, what can we do? Like, how can we, I mean, is there a some type of fine or anything like that? I mean, can these, the people who are breaking into people's homes, I mean, are they not being arrested or are they just go back to the home and they're like, oh, sorry about, sorry for breaking in your house.
Chief, chief, you had something to say?
Everything the attorney's saying is true. We need, I may not like it either, okay? Um, the police department has done what we can and we turned everything over to the state months ago. Long time ago, we had an inspector here and gave them all this information long before this even started, okay? I mean, before the second home wanted to come into town. That was not that long ago. It's up to them, it's state reign, okay? So, so they have all the stuff, I haven't been given an update on where they're at with it, that I haven't been given. Um.
Is that the attorney general's office you're talking about? That we're just turning up with?
Not, we contact everybody in the state.
Okay.
Okay, uh, but I don't, I personally talked to two different inspectors from the AG's office, and there was another one, Health and Safety, or
Yeah.
uh, Health and Safety Bureau. And they have, they're aware of it. What this gentleman said earlier, this is a management issue at that location, one hundred percent, okay? Now, since all this has started, we haven't had an issue at that address, okay? Since, since I think whatever company owns that, I think they got word and got somebody in place watching these people as they should have been doing twenty four seven. So as, as a police department and as the state, I don't, I can't tell you what they're doing, I can only tell you, they have everything. I mean, every report, everything. So, but with the, I don't like what the attorney's saying either. Um, but, but he's telling you the truth. I've dealt with this before, the past years ago, long before here, and they're coming.
You asked a question?
No, Dan.
Every time the police have been dispatched out there, I know there's been nine one one calls. Has there been a police report filled out by the police officer on every case, every call?
I can't tell you every call, I gave it all this void, okay, by multiple people.
Right.
Okay, and I pulled the case numbers and I think I even pulled the reports.
Yeah, we had a list.
You had, I mean, a whole list, right? Um, and then what I found was there's a difference between a, a records management system, okay, which is what we have here. And then there's a CAD system, okay, computer aided dispatch, okay? We are dispatched from Sincom, Sincom, okay? So what I did then is I contacted them, Sincom, and I asked them to look up that address as well. I can only look up with what I have in the house, that's it, right? So when they looked up theirs, there was a bunch of other calls for service at that address, but not necessarily reports for me. Because there didn't need to be a report made or what happened, I mean, I can't tell you exactly, but every, every time we did a report, we have that in-house. I had that at my fingertips.
Okay.
If I need to get something from Sincom, I have to rely on them, okay? I hope I answered your question.
And I guess one of my questions to the lawyer is, e- everybody talks about the group home residence rights. What about the rights of the lady that was in the? What about the rights of the lady that was at the plan commission meeting, that they broke into her house, they destroyed her property? And when she talked to the people, the residents that owned it, she just got crickets. Nothing done for her. Why does she have to go hire a lawyer to go after? The big company in Chicago? Why can't this city, or why hasn't the city? Has the city sent anything in a formal letter to that company? Have they, have you as the city attorney sent anything? Has the mayor sent anything? I know you've turned stuff over to, to the state or whatever, but has, I hear that you haven't heard back. Well, I was brought up and taught the squeaky wheel. Well, if you haven't heard anything back, I call them once a week. Call them once a week, and if you guys are too busy to give me the number, I'll call them once a week. Well. But I'm, I, and I know, but some of that, it has to be. The, the things that have gone on were there, had gone on, like the gentleman over there, Alderman Smith said, has gone on long, too long. It should have been nipped in the butt a long time ago. Now that the, the light, you know, the curtain's been drawn back. Now they're kind of watching what they're doing, but. I, one other question for you, if I call and you know, police officers and say, hey. I have a safety issue because they're parked across the sidewalk again, are they gonna issue that person this ticket?
They can't.
They may or may not. The officer may or may not.
May or may not, I mean, if it's a steady complaint, probably.
Okay.
Okay. I suppose stop it just for a second, okay, just cuz I think you're, you're uh adding two things. One, when it comes to, when I give it to the state, right? Then it's their investigation, okay? So you understand. So when it comes to this new home coming in here. I think the city has been doing what they can do. I don't know how many boyas I got on this stuff and I mean, everybody has this violation out there. So I think, if you don't wanna hear this, I don't wanna say it, but we don't have any options. And I know that isn't what anybody wants to hear and I don't wanna say it, but we know.
The, this, the difficulty is, is that when you have. What effectively is one neighbor damaging their neighbor's property, that is a hundred percent. A civil matter that has to be resolved between the two neighbors. The city cannot.
But it's a business, though.
But if it's not, it's a residence, so.
But in the case of where the resident attacked a neighbor. That is not civil. That person should have been arrested and then we understand he, they, the police officers. This is hearsay, couldn't do anything to him because it was a person from that residence. But the person was attacked and was witnessed by his, by his neighbor and turned it into the. State's attorney or the attorney general, whichever, was turned into him and that started another investigation. But that's not a civil thing. That is a criminal thing.
Correct. That's, that's different, but if you're talking solely about property damage. It's no different than if somebody throws a stone across the property line and damages. There's no difference there. And the hard part is is that this is no difference than a um. From, effectively from the way that that's the law looks at it. This is no difference than somebody. Who owns a house and rents it to four people, then owns a house and has four residents in. So when you're talking about.
Who need the twenty-four seven care and all that kind of stuff, there's, there's.
As regulated by the state, the state is the one who dictates whether or not, whether, what kind of supervision they see. The classification of regulation, all those things comes from the state, but those people are just residents of that home.
Well, I got another question for you. So I was trying to read through that whole. Thing or whatever with the act of like people with disabilities can purchase a home and all that kind of stuff, which is great. Same with like, if they wanna have their, have a business or whatever, awesome, but. Here, an individual with a disability is not purchasing the home, a business. Is purchasing a home. That's great, you can purchase the home. However, there's already covenants in that. Um neighborhood that there are allowed no businesses. We would love for you to bring your business to our town, that's great. But it would need to be in the business district. This is. They like, it's like they flip it, like, it's like, okay, well, it's really just a home, but, but we're gonna turn it into a business. Like, you know, you know, I'm trying.
It's no different than somebody owning a home and renting that house.
They have disabilities and they have a, a nurse or somebody. Who's being paid to watch these people, like it's.
That's what it sounds like. Right. They don't have, they need to be twenty-four seven. Somebody is not doing their job, is what it sounds like to me.
Which is what the state requires in this case. They didn't do it.
So if I have a minor, which is, I'm gonna consider those people in the group home as a minor, no matter what their age is, as a minor, because they're. They, they have. In- anyways, so if I have a minor in my house and I go over and destroy somebody else's house, I'm, I'm liable for it. So wouldn't, so, but you're saying that the ci- can't the city? Can't the city send something up to the state and say, this lady was wrong by this? We, we want you to help. Help that person out, Kansas City. Take ten minutes and write a letter up to the state or to the. Fair Housing Act or whoever it is, sends, just bombard them with stuff about. These, these things are happening and you, you as the state are not protecting. The resident that was in there that's out here about, that got cut up, had to go to the hospital, or the people that are scared to death. To, to go to sleep at night because they're waiting for somebody to break in their house.
Okay, can I say something? I'm sorry. So I have a friend of mine that actually works there. Okay? And basically what she told me. Was the company, I'm not gonna mention the company's name cuz I can't remember anyway. There, they are, they should have three people. Um twenty-four hours, you understand what I'm saying? What is it? Ten, 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 or whatever, ten, ten. Eight, eight, eight. Um but they're trying to save money and so they only have two. And so those two people are exhausted when they should have three. And not, and they won't be, it won't be so bad. You understand what I'm saying? So she's like. Talked to them also about hiring another person, but then that means the business has to come out with more money and they don't wanna do that. That's, that's.
Lady was talking about when we were at the planning committee meeting. The uh, uh, the first meeting, that's what she was saying, that they save money. By not having a proper place.
Cause she was, my friend was telling me that the, the lady. The lady with disabilities that broke into the lady's house, she said she was looking for toys. She wasn't going in there to, and, and I'm not making any excuse for anybody, but her mind is like the mind of a seven-year-old.
Right.
She was, she wasn't wanting there hurting one, she, she, she didn't wanna, you know, kill anyone, she didn't want to. Vandalize, she was look, she was going in there looking for toys. Uh so I, I'm just, I just wanna say that.
Right, I mean, but there, I mean, as an adult.
Right, she shouldn't have been out, period, right, right. But, but I don't want it to seem like.
Go, Jess.
You just have a quick question. So they are classified as housing and not business. And that seems to be where some of the confusion is, we're going back and forth on it. Can we, so like, I have rental properties in town, just like you said, it, we have to have, we stay within the parameters of our other rental properties. So like, I have to have inspections and go through things every time my tenant changes. So can we not implement anything to do with that when they're changing? I know they're gonna change over more often, but that's not really our problem. If that's the parameters we have set for, if they're gonna be considered a landlord having tenants.
Yeah.
Can we not hold them to that standard a little bit?
The, because you said too earlier, you said that we can, we have to treat them the same as residential, so that would be the same.
Do an inspection for every single family?
Yes.
Yeah, every year?
Yeah.
It's a rental property, yes. It will, every time it ch- it changes.
Time it changes.
Changes tenant.
Person moves out.
Yeah, so if, if, if one of the, one of the patients moves.
The problem was. Whether or not, because. The difficulty is whether or not. They would view that as being treated differently because these are disabled persons. I'm not saying, but that's gonna be the art. Necessarily transitions.
This is the problem, judicial system, this lawyer, no offense, Jesus Christ. Like, at the end of the day, the guys in there, the girls, or whoever's getting out of these houses. If my kid, six years old, goes to my neighbor's house, scratches the shit out of the car, I gotta go pay for it.
That's fine.
I don't understand the legality of how this is so damn difficult. This guy ends up at this house and he ends up in Buell's house, gets his ass shot, well. I'm sorry, I hate, that's the same.
That's a civil, that's a civil case. If, if one of them comes over and damages a house, that's a lawsuit. Against that resident and against the company that's running the.
But you said it, you said that was civil just a minute ago, that couldn't, so who is it?
You can, the, you can s- if an occupant, if the neighbor gets their property damaged, that's a civil matter that they can sue. The other house, the company, anybody. For, but that's not something that we can get involved, but just the same as the city wouldn't get involved if your six-year-old went over and scratched the neighbor's car. That's, that's the difference there.
How, but, well, right. How, but how can the, how can the city, though then protect? You know, our citizens here with businesses coming in, bringing in people who we know have.
Because unfortunately, the federal government and the state legislature have both ruled that we cannot.
So, so we can, are, everybody's just.
And there is the actual le- legislation pending right now. That you'd get with that would make it even harder to do anything with regards to this. So the public policy has been made clear that they can operate, there's. As Brent said, there probably are twice as many as you know about operating because. They are operating under the legal auspices, they don't have to follow that special use permit. Um and a number of villages.
If they don't have to follow any rules, then why, 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 why do they have to come and invade these neighborhoods? Why can't they actually have a business and like enact their own facility, their own structure?
But the problem is, is how is that any different than renting a house to four college kids or? Whatever they wanna do. I mean, that's the, that's the difficulty here. Is you run the risk of having a bad neighbor, whether they're disabled or they're not. And you can't.
Yeah, I, yeah. Anybody have a question for any?
Yeah, I would say also, if you wanna sympathetic ear, this is in his district, Charlie Myers on top of this. But he can't, he doesn't have any power, but he did save, or you know, he dealt with the Centray thing, but his. His district has a ton of these and he's dealt with it, so. Light is thrown up, baby. Don't tell him I said that.
Okay, Brent, Brent, go play ball.
Okay. Thanks. Be better departed. We have to.
Well, it's just like what you said earlier. About, there was a house on Harmon Drive. Where they live, nobody knew about.
Uh, well, I've actually found out the other morning that a lot of people know about it because they had an issue with a male. Uh streaking through the fuel station and everything else.
On, on the Harmon Drive?
That was recently.
Oh, it's a few, a few years ago. I mean, they've been closed down for a few years, but. Uh this, I asked the manager there when we were talking and uh she had said that, oh yeah, no, we used to have.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about, yeah, that, um. I do have a question off, off topic, on topic, but I was talking to Paul today about this topic. Let's say. This all comes in and they have four people. Do they have, do we have the right to know who's in there for an occupancy permit?
Thank you, that's my question. Thank you, that's my question.
Then why don't we talk about this?
If that's, I didn't have that legal answer, so.
Okay, I understand and, and I can look at it more, but I understand is, we can't require them to. Because the regulation has to go through the state, all of that reporting has to go through the state, not through us.
That's what I thought, but we were discussing, I said, boy, I didn't have that legal answer. We made that because that's under HIPAA, right?
So, so.
I don't like it either.
But so are you, that was, so the ne- the neighbors there or whatever have no idea. Who's outside next to their child or has problems.
But you, I mean.
But you, you do though, cuz you can, we can, I can look and see who lives wherever I want.
You can see who the property.
Right, and then, right, and then I can look up and, and look up their, if they have a record or anything like that, and all that kind of stuff. Sure you can.
You can't. But that doesn't mean that that tells you everything you need to know about individuals.
Right, but at least gives you a, 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 an idea of who you're living next to. I mean, I do it.
Yep.
Of course, you, you say that. With civil and, and illegal and, so if one of the residents trespasses and, and breaks into my house. Can I not have them arrested? For trespassing?
Yes, yes.
I, I was, I've heard from other neighbors that they have tried and please say, I'm sorry, man, there's not a thing I can do about it, they're.
This is what they're reporting to, because of the mental status. Of the individual we're dealing with.
Right.
And us knowing that they're a mental status of an eight-year-old.
Right.
I don't like this either, okay, before you yell at me, I'm gonna yell, but. Yeah, we'd probably look at us like we're crazy.
The difficulty there is, is yes, they can be arrested, they know they likely could not never be convicted because you not have.
From a, from a lawyer saying. If somebody broke into my house and I had called and had them arrested. And there is damage to my house, it gives a little bit more creeps when I go after the. Homeowner or the home, the group home owner, that your person broke in, they were arrested, they were not. They dropped the charges because of the person's capabilities, but.
And keep in mind, in the state of Illinois under the Safe Act, it's catch or release.
Yeah.
Okay, so just remember that. And again, I, I think there's some good stuff in that act, okay, but that's.
Yeah, and then there's suicide.
Like suicide, that's fine.
Okay, guys, we have a call, let's move to stuff. Now we go to the audience five-minute rule. You have any more to say from the audience?
I've got something other than what they've been discussing.
What do you got, Dave?
Let me just read through it. Uh Dave Renfro, one zero nine one seven Silvins Vista. Um over the last few months, I have sent papers and literature to Aldi Alderman, the mayor, city clerk. Um in regards to. The bad intersection at Casey's. And, and the left tire rut lane going up Route four. And the uh intersection of Bellville Street and Route fifty and have not heard, I don't know if the chairman of health and safety, the mayor, the. Streetsuit's attendant, or anybody has called I dot, the county, now I understand, we own. The street out to Bellville Street, all the way out to fifty. So I don't know if anybody has followed through or is, is anybody gonna follow through for getting those things repaired? Because I don't think it's, Joe, Joe Citizen isn't gonna know who to call at I dot, but we need to get those fixed and if you don't call. They're not gonna come, they're not gonna fix it. You know, one of the other things I have is, I also sent a thing, didn't know if the police chief or the mayor or someone could get ahold of I dot. And have them change the timing on the stoplights at the intersection, the four and fifty, because. A lot of times from three thirty to five thirty in the afternoon, the traffic is backed up all the way to the Morgan Farm. Because the, the light doesn't stay on long enough for the traffic to move through. But I haven't put it on a timer, but it seems like the traffic coming from the east. Has the longest time of anybody. If you're, if you're heading, you're heading west, all right, sorry, heading east and you're sitting at the intersection. Takes forever to be able to turn, can't make a turn on the right, that's against the law. But it takes forever. Could somebody call them and see if something like that could be taken care of? And as far as the proposed new. Um group homes, I just have a question that. Um. A friend, they're gonna fill the swimming pool in. I, I don't know how they're gonna get in the backyard to do it, that's their problem. The one neighbor has had, who talked to me and she's concerned that they're gonna destroy her yard. I said, well, they can't. You can tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lawyer, but they can't drive or tear her property up without her permission.
Correct.
So my question to the police chief, if he's still here, is if they start to tear her yard up and she calls the police, will he? Make them stop? And my other thing is, if they come and they have dirt and rock and sand or whatever they're filling it with. Are they gonna be allowed to dump it in the street? And if so, if it rains. Or is, is it somebody from the city gonna make sure they put ditch checks in so that we don't clog our storms? Or is, is it somebody from the city gonna make sure they put ditch checks in so that we don't clog our storm sewers up? And. That's pretty much all I got.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Dave. We won't answer any questions now, but later on we'll try to answer.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else in the audience? Dave, Dave?
I know most of you, Dave Tate with uh, Bit Froald Gym, um. Or he goes, well, he's back there now. Thank you guys for getting the walnut, or the walnut tree, gumball tree cut down by my gym. Nice not twisting my ankle every time I take my trash out, so. Um, thank you whoever is responsible for that. And then I, I just wanna start what I'm gonna get into here real quick with. Jessica, what I'm gonna say here is not personal, but I am gonna speak on behalf of others that don't want their names mentioned, but. I, as the vice president of our Lebanon Improvement Association and vice president of our chamber, I've gotta bring these. Concerns to you guys.
Hey Dave, remember you're just saying that we can't answer any questions.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just, yeah, I, I don't expect answers tonight. I'm only asking to pause the move that you guys have about the banks. Uh, the proposal move our primary banking relationship raises some serious questions. Um, about ethics, optics, stewardship and basic processes that we do in this town. Okay, first the obvious conflict of interest. And I know I, I, I watched the last council meeting that you addressed that and. I know you, I've known you, and. It's not a, it's not a thing for you, it's, it's this door, it's window, or this, you know, you won't be able to close if these optics stay this way. Um, you know, you disclosed the employment with the Bank of Springfield and like I said, I appreciate the disclosure, but uh. You know, in the services, it's not only avoid the actual conflicts, it must avoid the appearance of conflict. Um, that appearance here is unavoidable. Um, that alone warrants a recusal from any advocacy of firewall communications and independent review before any vote that warrants any type of respect. From the public on whatever decision that you guys make. Um, second, and probably the biggest to the folks that this has been discussed with, within our groups. Is that bank has absolutely no presence here, none. They have a lot of promises, but they have no branch, they have no track record with the city. We're being told the service will be great and people will drive where needed, and that is not the same as being here, we're not shallow, we're not swanky. And to compare the two is just, it's not apples to apples, as apples to a vegetable. Um, a lot of that things, thank God we're not. Um, but when something breaks, when fraud claims hit or when casualties get messy and proximity matters. I'm sure many in here have local bank people's numbers in your phones right now, you can call on a Saturday or Sunday, I know I do. Um, my mortgages and things for my business are here in town. Um, and I plan to keep it that way. I don't care what interest rate some other bank gives me because. I can't go into that chamber or be part of a Lebanon Improvement Association and then say that that's our mission statement. Tell you guys shop local, stay local and all this, and then at the same time, the city's out here shopping outside sources. And, you know, I get the interest rate headline, it sounds great, no one's disputing that, that interest is good for financial returns. But at the same time, I would have to argue that finding other options to get returns on investment with that money. There's other options you could do, the CDs and things that you did talk about. You know, those can still be used at these other banks, just because you're locking that money up for a little bit of time. The interest is still higher in those CDs. It just depends on how much you need at that specific time, so. Saying that a checking or savings account having a higher interest rate. You know, and that's not a guarantee forever, it's a guarantee to the end of the year, but my God, when I signed up with Scott Credit Union back in two thousand nine, they were paying us four point nine five percent on the checking account. But that was great for two years, and then they just lowered it, and then they took away commercial loans, you know, they, they were a great bank at one time, but. Um, I ruined. Um, some relationships I had with other banks back then when I switched to them for that, so. Um, it's, to me, there's just other optics in there that just, you guys need to look at further, um. Process and transparency are not where they should be, I understand this is a professional service and not a stat- uh, statutory bid, even so. Best practice for a city is simple, publish the request, name every respondent, not blind numbered, I know you did the one, two, three, four. Um, share a total cost of conversion, staff and time required, none of that has been laid out for the residents. When I say layout, I don't mean write a fifty page pamphlet, I mean make it simplistic to a point, it's a sales pitch, yes. But this is not a car on a used lot, no one needs to be bought for this idea. Uh, they need to be assured the decision is not only made based on that one category. Um, practical risks, observe answers writing before any votes, the cash handling, the plan for the cash isn't final, it's a major control gap. Who's gonna transport it, how often, what vehicle, what insurance, what audit trail? Would anybody donate another couple minutes to me?
It's five minute maximum.
Thank you.
A- anybody else in the audience? Okay, Oliver.
I'm Peter McLaughlin, um, I just wanna say, I wish that the city council, maybe you are. Would spend some time, if there's, if the city of Swansea was able to keep this house from coming in and. I've heard Breeze or Avison or somebody did the same thing, uh, I think I would like that you guys, whoever that is, whether it's the attorney or who does the investigation, but. Find out how they did that. Uh, I called and talked to a Birchwood Law in Northbrook, Illinois. Uh, talked to a legal aide, not an attorney, and on their webpage, it says that this clustering thing is, is real, and she told me it's not a state statute, it's not a federal statute. It's a city regulation that the city has to adopt. And she further told me that since we had not experienced this before, we could adopt it today and it's not retaliatory, we could adopt it before we approve this current. Um, issue with this new home and say, this is brand new to the city of Lebanon, this is not retaliatory, this is what we wanna do from here forward. Now, I'm not an attorney, I don't know if that's true or not, he's shaking his head no, but uh, I think that it's well worth. For us as citizens to know that you guys have investigated that. How did Swansea do it? How did Breeze or Avison or whatever? Get by with turning these down? And I don't know what it costs when you get sued, but if they wanna sue us, let them sue us. And see where it goes from there, maybe the attorney can tell me it's three million dollars and we give them the water tower or something, you know, we're, we're broke, right, we don't have any money. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else in the audience? Nothing out there, any older person?
Yeah, um, back to the banking, I think that, um. Lebanon has been standing still too long with this buddy buddy system. Everybody knows everybody. Everybody likes everybody, you my buddy, you my friend, I'm going back with you, cause you my friend. It's time for us to move on. We want the streets fixed, we want this fixed, we want that fixed, where we gonna get the money? It's time for us to move on. If we make a mistake, so what? We ain't the first ones. And we probably won't be the last ones.
I wouldn't give you the extra time either.
I think that, um, whatever we decide. We're not gonna satisfy everybody. We can do it. Some people ain't gonna like it, some people will like it, so we just roll with it. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Dave? Yes, uh, okay, uh, what time, uh, did you say for the lights on Route four, sir?
Three thirty to five thirty.
Okay, and then I have reached out to the Bellevue Yard, um, and when I talked to the. I was answering this question, he was, yeah, that's the question.
Maybe later on, when we come up to something that's closer like Streets and Alley or something, we can do that, okay? Any other, any other older person?
Real fast. Been getting a lot of positive comments about the speed, uh, signs that are out in town. And some of our suggestions came out as, uh, some suggestions came out where they might be adjusted and moved a little bit. But as soon as they're.
Go ahead, George.
But I was saying, yeah, they're good, cause I, I went around the corner and I saw one there, it wasn't working yet. And a day later, everything was working. And uh, it's interesting, cause they're, they appear to be pretty much in the right place. Uh, one coming into town from the east, you got one, uh, on Monroe Street, but it's really close to the intersection. You're not gonna get a lot of fascinate there, because they're just getting started going down that hill. And, um, I know there's probably one going down, but you've got them pretty much in the right places right now. Uh, we do need to have some other portable ones to put places like. My, my biggest problem is that, um, my street. It's, it's a racetrack at times, and it's a dead end street, it's because people have a mile to get up speed before they get to the bend. Then they slow down, get around the bend, speed on down to, to, uh, all the street. But, uh, I think, uh, uh, that's a compliment I have to put out there. And the chief did a good job getting those in.
But you cracked the whip, Dave?
That was Cody, I guess.
You got the sign, but he put it, okay.
No, I'm just thinking.
Of what he's saying here, uh, you know, Monroe and, um, Ursula's starting into a racetrack to. You know, hit that little gully and dip off to the races that are going. It don't matter, so I don't know what can be done. Right the will.
Yeah, anybody else?
Um, I were there, but I don't know if it's, should I wait till Streets and Alley's, um, a resident, uh, got in touch with me about the buses. From McKendry, when they have like sporting events, they've been. I guess parking on the street and it's been taking up a lot of space, I think before they were saying that the buses would park on a gravel road. By in between like the cemetery and the water tower or something or other, I don't know. Anyways, I, I thought I'd bring it up.
We'll make it, maybe Cody will come up somewhere. Anybody else? Okay, now we can move on to, what do we got here? Oh, midi report. Streets and Alley, Sean.
Yeah, we need to approve this Lions Club Candy Day, we've been talking about it since Jurassic Park era. Friday and Saturday, October tenth, we just basically need to approve it, we all know what they're doing. On contrary to what some other alderman didn't know what the heck was going on, he's no longer here anyways. So I'm recommending approval for the Lions Day Club Candy Day, Friday and Saturday. I'll read it, October tenth and eleventh from seven to six. At the intersection of McAllister and South Madison, four way stop at Casey's. And West St. Louis Monroe, four way stop at the police department, same place they've been going, like I said, it says. T-Rex was formed, so somebody please second this.
I'm a little bit Cornish on the second. I didn't know, I just, so many to you.
Yeah, any, any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Cornish?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Marzenkowski?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Belkey?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes, sir.
That's it. Okay, we move on to finance, Mike.
All right, uh, resolution for banking, uh, sounds like I don't have to. Go back over the background on this, uh, we have got to the point where we've got a resolution to have, uh, the mayor and the treasurer. Hand around the final details of this agreement with the Bank of Springfield. Um, I did have one, one note on this, it says near somewhere that it was a voice vote, that that was approved last week. It was a roll call, cause I remember, so. If I have that changed, that's not a big deal.
There was no form.
This was two weeks ago.
Do you, you making a motion in line?
Uh, I have one more thing, uh, just wanna make sure, so after those terms are. Uh, negotiated, we'll be able to go on whatever comes out of that again, right?
Yeah, so the intent with this was for, um. The mayor and the treasurer to work out the full details of what's being moved, what types of accounts those are gonna be. If anything's staying where it's going to be, what the plans are for. What's gonna be here locally, what's going to be not local, who's gonna be responsible, all of those plans should be pulled together. And then put into an ordinance that then would be put in front of all of you. For approval, so the details and then what, make sure if there's any. Specific code sections will need to be addressed as part of that, or if it can just be adopted as an ordinance, um. In that fashion. That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're making a motion on the.
You wanna address the other issue a little bit, hopefully keep it short, um, on the process, um. I know this all thought out before I came in, but, uh. I, I don't see, uh, much merit to, uh, what was, uh, in that anonymous letter, uh. It kind, it suggested redoing the whole thing, uh, and based on that, uh, once we found out their treasurer works for this bank, or that the bank. Was one of the people putting in a, an author. That there was some communication there, and I think the only communication there was to get that information on the rate after the end of the year. And then they were invited into a, a meeting with people on the city's staff who would be working with the bank. And I guess maybe we could have had somebody else do that communication, but I don't think it really changed anything. I think the numbers are pretty clear on the way to go here. Uh, so I guess that's all I have to say about it, and I would move that we. Approve the resolution with the one.
I second.
Any, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a thing. Are we able to amend the ordinance on what comes up tonight, if something new comes up, like we're talking about accounts? Keeping some here, is that gonna be part of the ordinance, can that change?
Yeah, so this resolution is just selecting that proposal and allowing them to move forward with. Coming up with the full plan and negotiating all that, so there's, I mean technically. It could all fall apart and it never gets approved or something to that effect, uh, but. The, the next step from this resolution would be an ordinance of adopting that whole plan to be filled.
Any more discussions?
Uh, there was no conflict, uh, of interest, she go. Uh, from would, yes, from, uh.
From my review of it, none of the issues that were raised as far as who would have a conflict. Applied in this scenario, because the treasurer does not have a vote in this, so all the vote is by the council. So there's no, from a statutory standpoint, there's no conflict there.
Just, just outsiders proceed. Not a conflict, correct, correct.
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Barrow?
Yes.
Marzenkowski?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Belkey?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
So Cornish?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance, George.
Okay, the ordinance. Committee will meet again on Tuesday, October sixth at six thirty. We have finally had the net start agreement resolution. And I invite a new approval of both those items.
Have a second? Second. RJ, any discussion?
Okay, roll call please.
So they were each, they were separate issues, right or not?
No, the agreement approves the agreement, that's not the resolution to authorize the execution.
So they still got a lovely resolution.
Correct.
Marzenkowski?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Belkey?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Cornish?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
We have nobody on water sewer right now, but they meet, uh, September fifteenth at six thirty, uh, cemetery, RJ?
Sir, uh, meet, uh, Tuesday, October sixth at, uh, six thirty.
Send them, health and safety, you have anything? When, when, when you meet, text.
Oh, September fifteen.
Okay, thank you. Probably Friday, uh, Amber?
No, I don't have anything, but we meet again, uh, Tuesday, October sixth at six thirty.
Is that the personnel army?
Nothing, well, the seat needs, sir, uh, meet September fifteenth at six thirty.
Okay. Uh, Troy, Paul?
I have nothing.
You have nothing? Treasurer, Jessica?
Uh, yeah, I just wanna share a couple things to, it's probably pointless, but I just wanna clear a couple things up that are going around that are. rumor, um, and kind of confusing, but the chart that I shared that said bank one, two, three and four on it was not to try and hide what banks were except for the fact that I was trying to protect our local branches and those that gave the proposals so that you went in, and I, and I shared those names with the banks after that chart was released, but um, I did that before, so if it went out into the public, there wasn't issues of conflict and people attacking our local branches. Um, I'm more than willing to answer any questions that people have. I, I thought I was being transparent, so I do apologize to those that don't feel like I was. I also would like to state that we are not moving all of the city's money out of town. This is a portion of the funds. This is not an approval to change our entire banking relationship. We still have a significant banking relationship here locally. Um, and then the last thing that I would like to address is a lot of people feel like we don't have processes in order and they want all that to be transparent, everything. I'm gonna be very frank with you. I am not going to stand in this meeting and say on Thursdays when we have fifteen hundred dollars, Stephanie is gonna drive to Shiloh in the code enforcement vehicle. I don't feel like it should be said in public of what our cash handling practices are gonna be. I feel like it's something from administrative level that we can handle and that um, we can get taken care of, and that's not to be hiding, but that's to protect our employees when they are transporting that cash. Um, so I just wanna, I wanna say that because I think some people think I'm trying to hide things and find different ways that I'm trying to hide things. I'm actually very transparent, so if you want to ask me, I'd be, I would love to discuss things with you. I just simply have been trying to keep things as vague as possible um, to protect our local branches and protect our employees and those all involved, so. That's all I have.
That's it? Okay, we move on. You got anything, Luke?
I think the next thing will be for you guys to discuss um, the plan commission and then report back to me as to what you decide with, uh, what you wanna adopt, if you have any questions on those legalities of things. Um, let me know, I'm more than willing to discuss those. Um, yeah, or if there's anything you'd want me to look at in more detail. Um, as far as the discussion about what other communities did or have done. Um, I am aware that some of them did that. That doesn't change the fact that I've seen case law that says that that may not be enforceable. So, there's a difference here between enacting and enforcing it, and that's one of the things to keep in mind with some of this. Um, and the more things you have on the books to enforce that you don't enforce becomes an issue when you start trying to enforce the things you, you want to enforce, so. Um, that's the word of caution I would provide at this point. Um, I don't think I have anything else that is on my um, list to do, of to-dos right now, but if anybody has anything, feel free to reach back out to me.
Okay, thanks, Luke. Okay, it's my turn now. Uh, y'all don't know, Pat Stevenson designed his board one alderperson on twenty-sixth August. And I have someone else that's interested in uh, taking his place. He has to get me a bio and then we have to run it through the council, whatever, so. That's all I have. Uh, Department heads, chief?
Uh, yes, sir. Don't know if y'all remember, anybody watch cop movies and that kinda stuff, cop series and CIS and everything, right? Okay, my wife loves that kinda stuff. Yeah, that's entertainment, folks, okay? Cause when her wife turns after Washington turns around, I'm saying, how come you're not that good? That's when the argument starts, anyway.
You tell us, you tell her it's fiction, right?
Exactly. So, I'm telling you this because it's gotten really over the last several years, probably eight years ago. Attorneys, when they're trying a case, will actually tell jurors this very same thing, okay? It's not real, it's entertainment, so. Uh, don't know if y'all remember, but we're probably approaching about a year where our true value got broken into, okay? Uh, I'm limited to what I can say, but I can now say something about that, that update you. That case was just, our case here was just a very small piece to that puzzle. Uh, the suspects came from Florida and Arizona and went entirely across the country. We had worked that case as far as we could work it. Um, the stuff that we did in the initial incident with the assistance of state police and Muskuta prompted the case to really jump ahead. And the feds wound up taking it and they have uh, made some arrests on it. Uh, and it was a whole group of people that were going across country. Uh, they don't have them all yet, but they have made some arrests on it, so I'm limited to what I can say. So, that's real good news. Uh, moving more recent, recently we had a couple of burglaries um, in the four hundred block of South uh, Madison. Uh, kids come back from school, they find out that their lockers uh, didn't have locks on, stuff is missing out of it. Or probably know who we did, we probably know who did it, but proving it is another matter, okay? So, we also had a burglary at Cedars here recently. Uh, I'm limited at what I can say, but this is another case that involves people from out of the area and it's turned out to be multi-jurisdictional and multi-state. There's been a lot of work put into this case, and I'm hoping we've executed at least I wanna say five search wards, and we're probably not done yet. Uh, but it's going very, very well. And I hope to provide more information in time, I'll just say, the same TV, so, but it's going very well, yes.
When you said the Cedars, that poses a bit of, is that the nursing home?
Yes. Yes. Uh, and that too possibly uh, may be a bad case, so we put a lot of time and effort into that and it's going extremely well. Uh, lastly, I think I had was the signs that are just now put up. Uh, yes, we are collecting data. Um, so, I'm gonna let this go for a couple of weeks. I've already looked at it, there's already data there. Um, some of it kinda surprised me, some of it didn't, but we're only talking since Friday, so. Uh, gonna let the data, I'll report that to you as well. We've had complaints of speeding on Bellville. Uh, college at Roger, running stop signs. We've been writing citations, so we are hitting them as much as we can. Any questions? We good?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
When you go down fifty and you hit by the school and it says you're in violation, is the twenty mile an hour speed limit at five thirty in the morning? Or that's just something that can all program one, it says school, but it's five thirty in the morning, it's still school zone? I thought it was when children.
During, during schools.
And the other question is, when children are present, present in the building or present outside?
Outside, okay, perfect, that's all I needed to know.
Thanks, chief. Well, I, I forgot something a while ago. If you haven't noticed, uh, Matt and Tiffany Hounds have closed on the old Sheppes building down there and they've begun work on their tattoo, which is called and then we'll move on to Streets. Cody?
All right, I'm gonna answer these, I got them. Mr. Winfro, I'll start with you, Winfro, I'll continue there, right? Um, the only questions you were asking about was Bellville Street at the end of the road that we just uh, went through the process of an exchange. Uh, the question for that is, is now that we are working and that is our road, we're going out for bid to look at getting into that road fixed properly. Uh, that's one of the reasons, not, that's a little bit of the reason why, but the speed signs also couldn't go out because it was a county road. Um, just like I'd, we would have to ask for permission, go through the process. Uh, it makes it a lot easier when you occupy and own the road. Um, as far as the Route Four, excuse me, I'm trying to get over this cold here. Uh, as far as Route Four, your question on that is, is northbound, northbound traffic where the intersection grew up and then at the edge of the road where it's also rough. Uh, we have patched close up to Route Four a couple times with the assistance of the police department, protecting our guys that are out there. Um, I refuse to put our guys back out there. The simple fact of, we don't need to be out there putting our guys at risk, especially making, I don't care what they make, if they're making fifty, sixty dollars an hour, but your guys are making twenty-one bucks an hour, we're not gonna get so much killed. It shouldn't be our responsibility going out, hide away. And at the end of the day, uh, I did talk to a gentleman by the name of Tom Harris. And he said that you work with Chris S well a lot, I guess you work down there. He said you should know him, you should be able to call him. And he said that he, he does have complaints that are coming in. And his answer was, there's only eight staff at this facility, there's supposed to be twenty something, twenty-six, twenty-seven people. So, bear with them, they're working on getting stuff fixed also, but that's eight people out of Bellville that cover they're the third largest Illinois district for linear, linear feet. So, that kinda took, that kinda sums that up. If you have any questions, I guess is, you guys have his information?
I understand it, but it's not my responsibility as a citizen of Lebanon. If I believe and other people in town believe, that falls on the streets who contend, street and alley, the mayor.
Yes.
So, that falls on you guys.
To answer your question, we didn't do that.
Doesn't matter where I work or wherever, I, I don't, the man you're talking about, I don't deal with those people. I there's other people where I work that deal with them. I don't deal with those people. I don't talk to them, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any association with with the, the gentleman that you're talking.
Yeah, no worries. So, that's what I did is I reached out and that was his answer. I, I can't give you a better one. So, we did our job, we did our part. We got your information, we passed it along. Uh, it's no different than if you're riding down sixty-four, should we call in and say there's a pothole with mile marker twenty-three? Probably, and I got thing, they have a hotline for that reason, so I kinda feel like if you're a citizen of Lebanon and you're on a state highway, call the state highway. If you're a citizen of Lebanon and you're on a county road, call the county. If you don't have those numbers, call the city. I will call the county. I will call the highway department. Well, what's, what else we got here? Sorry, laundry list, um. You had questions on if they're out in the subdivision and they make a mess. Uh, I can't comment on going across the property, but they have concrete jacks, uh, pump trucks. I'm sure they could go over the house and pump that pool and no problem. I'd imagine that's what they would do. To me, that's a common sense thing. They make a mess, I go out. And usually talk with, like, seeing our homes after they're done, telling them they gotta brush the road and clean it up. If they don't clean it up, uh, Pennyhead just actually recently jetted a line open by Mr. Trainee's house. He can attest to this, right after it gets done drainage, when it flooded all the time. They got the kind of it out, brought the stuff up to the land, how many hours it took, manpower, how many buckets it was in? A lot of buckets, that's more than a lot more I wanna take out. And we sent them a bill. So, if you wanna make a mess, I'd be glad to send you a bill. Uh, starts at like fifty bucks an hour for two people and it gets hired from there. We have no contractor for cleanup here, sorry, I made notes. Uh, reported in the app. We, we, we took the time to get voice Lebanon because the community was at an uproar. We never listen to you, we never, you know, take the time to hear out what's going on. And um, I know not everyone is tech savvy, it's understand that we still have the option to go on the website. But uh, we made an app because everybody, right, like, is always staring at their phone, so. You can click on that emoji app or whatever you wanna call it. I'm not tech savvy either, but pull it up, put it in. If it's a sewer problem, it goes to Penny in the mare. If it's a water, if it's a stormwater problem, it goes to me in the mare, so that this is all readily available. Um, I do know that I monitor Facebook. I shouldn't have to. It seems like we go to Teddy's Free For All to cry about things and it's not brought to the city's attention, so uh, please bring it to our attention so we can fix it. Complaining about it behind someone's back doesn't get the job done, so let us know so we can do our jobs too. We're here to help. Uh, as far as the signs placement, uh. The signs were actually placed in a strategic place to make a zone, uh, and not, wasn't necessarily picked because it was coming off of Bellville Street or coming off of whatever road, so if you actually look out on North Monroe, it's placed to this north and south. So, your northbound, southbound traffic and in between that areas where we wanna collect that thing. Um, I understand it doesn't seem like it's a far shot from the intersection, but you'd be surprised how fast they get in the first two blocks. That is the stuff we're trying to capture. Um, so the placement of signs, I've worked with Mr. uh, Mr. Pocket, we got them out where we want them. As far as online, it takes a little bit. Uh, we had a couple of issues with solar, uh, they are solar powered. So, once they finally read a hundred percent charge, then we were able to go and put them online. You have to register every sign. And it takes time to register your signs. We used to go in, give them the sign number, sit through twenty, fifteen, twenty minutes per sign, five signs, and he was also waiting on the streets department. So, while we were working putting signs up, we were also doing all jobs too, so. You wanna take the blame on it, I'll take the blame. We were a little slow getting them out, but they're all up, they're all running, they seem to be functioning, so I'm glad to see them in town. Uh, something here, I'm gonna read it out loud, I wanna say it one more time. Change is hard. And I'm gonna make this very clear to everybody that's listening at home and everybody's hearing up. I've been here five years, and upon six. I haven't seen a proactive council in a long time. I've seen a reactive council. This is probably one of the best councils I've seen. I'm not doubting the other people. I'm not saying they did a bad job. But there's steps being taken before things happen. Uh, I just wanna give credit to everyone here, including the council, people that aren't here tonight. They're working very hard. Don't take it too serious. I know people get mad at you, but change is hard. And that's what you were elected to do, so remember at the end of the day, if your neighbor doesn't like you for a decision, it's in the benefit of the city to not leave money on the table. I don't like to leave money on the table, I'm gonna say best pet too, best offered. Uh, that's why I'm here, so I wanna get that out of the way. Brought online, and that's it, yeah. Design a route from McIndry's bus. I think someone said that, I brought that up. So, there's designated bus routes, they just don't use.
Right. I understand that point. It was the parking issue.
Yeah, they usually park at the baseball, so, and, and, and someone that's been here longer, please correct me, but for my short uh, time here and my attention span also. I've always seen them parked by the baseball fields. Correct me if I'm wrong, they always park in the big parking lot that sucks to go into when it's winter because you slide down to the bottom, it's absolutely terrible incline. But normally they park there. Uh, maybe next time I get with McIndry, uh, who would that be, I guess? I don't know, whoever, George, you fine, you're good at remembering who's what. Let's see, let's see if we can come up with a designated route, because I know last year in the winter, it was undoubtedly crazy getting a bus off. North St. Clair trying to go up a hill when they somehow managed to make it in the middle of town, but it shouldn't be, so. The internet's a great friend. You can actually put stuff on Google Maps that shows designated routes and it'll take you right there. If you never pay attention to your Google route map, it's walking, biking, trucks from a sheriff. We can set that up. Anybody else have any questions, please let me know, but uh, again, I think everyone's doing a knockout job. And uh, pat yourselves on the back because if everyone here liked you, you probably are doing the job you're hired for. That's my closing statement.
Thanks, Cody. Any water, Kenny, got anything right now? Are you, you wanna come on out, because you come up next?
Only thing I have, uh, besides what's already on the agenda is that uh, SLM went to free chlorine today. Um, that is listed on the city's webpage. It's really only important to uh, people who are on dialysis to uh, be aware of or less, but uh, it is posted out there. They'll go on free chlorine, which basically means they take away the ammonia. We just have a higher, people will notice the smell, a little bit more in the taste, chlorine. But it is a process that they do to burn out all of the ammonia that they've been feeding up to this point.
That it?
Yep.
Thank you. Hey Blake, wanna come on out? You wanna introduce yourself since some of these people don't know who you are?
I'm Blake, I'm the city inspector. I do the code enforcement well. Uh, all I have right now is I've, uh, we've completed sixty inspections from last report that I gave you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have talked to a few people in the area of concerns, uh, high weeds, high grasses and ditches behind sheds. Uh, those are being hopefully taken care of. Uh, I know there was two vehicles removed from Ward Two last week. Yeah, there's two of them removed, Linda, right down on uh, about the five hundred block of Third Street. So, just so you know that as well, hopefully trying to help get some of them out of one dollars. So, yeah.
That it? Thank you, Blake. Okay, move on to unfinished business, uh, discuss, approve, possible Hunter Street uh, restations options. Do you wanna say anything about that?
You're all presented the information in a meeting with TWM, um, option one and option two. I might tell you which is which right now, but I don't remember because they switched them in the meeting for us. But one basically is leaving, um, leaving the station as it is. Um, pretty much as it is and running a new sewer line um, to the west and to Noel Harp's yard. Um, at a lesser elevation, a bigger line and coming directly into the new station. The other option is to remove the station um, that they put in at the wrong elevation and put it back in at what was designed to begin with, or should have been designed to begin with. So, we're looking for a decision as to which way to have them proceed, proceed. Right now, we are doing nothing. It is sitting there, there is no progress being made. There is not a move from anyone until this decision is made. There is not a move from anyone until this decision is made. Penny, are they paying for it no matter which option in fact? The mistake is on TWM from what there was. The conversation that we've had here was that, I mean, there had been um. Facebook discussion, which I've seen, which is saying the city is going to put the bill for whichever mistake. That is not what was presented here. It was implied that if we did not go with their recommendation, which was. The option of a new sewer line to the west, that the liability for removing a station. Could fall back on the city. Um, I think that's a legal question. Um, I don't see how the city can be liable for something that was their mistake. Uh, but that is. A question not for me. I'm not an attorney.
So obviously there's no pending litigation on this. So it's. TWM has sent it to their insurance is my understanding of it. Um, I would imagine that more than their insurance is likely covering. Um, would cover option number or option two. As long as they go a hundred percent according to plan. The concern that I would have. From a legal standpoint is if you go with the option of pull out the new lift station. And try to put it back in is if it gets damaged in that. Process. They could potentially. Assert that that they were not responsible for that damage and that they they warned us. That that damage could occur. Uh, and then we would end up in a fight over who is responsible for. The costs as a result of the damage to the lift station. Uh, my understanding from that is also if. That lift station is damaged because of the way it was ordered and manufactured. Is that it likely would not be repairable. And that it couldn't entire could mean have to order a whole new one. Is that fair, Penny?
I'd say that's fair.
Um, in which case the risk there is. Even if it's not, even if they're responsible for the cost. It took them what, four, six months just to get it ordered and delivered, in which case. That potentially is another. Timeframe. You know, we're gonna be sitting on this waiting for the new one for four to six months.
And so would that have to go back out for bid too for them?
So, no, be well. This was my concern when they, that I asked them because. They're responsible for it. Um, they're the one. Ones bidding to have it done. So it does not go through. The statutes to govern the city on the bid. My concern would be is if it's damaged. And we have to reorder it and stuff like that. And they start declining. Saying that. They're not gonna be responsible for that. They're not gonna seek. The permit to to do that. Um. If the current permits would comply with that or then we would have to go back out for bid. On putting the whole new one in. And all kinds of things that. There's a lot of questions there if if that comes, if that gets pulled out and is damaged.
Yeah, so. You know, the reason that they want us to go with the other option, in my opinion, is because there's far less liability. For them. Um, in that their, you know, risk of damages. Basically none with the one process and greater with the other. A lot greater. But. My. Personal view on it is we. Paid them a fee to design us a lift station. We got eleven. You know, that's. In my opinion, we we got lesser of a product than what we. Asked them to provide for us. So just because it's less of a liability for them, does that make it a a good option for the city to accept? If it was the best way for it to be designed, it would have been designed that way from the start. In my opinion. You know, if, if. Setting a new line in and coming in at a shallower level was the best option. Then that would have been presented. As an option in the beginning. Now, now that's not what's being presented presented or why it's being presented is because. It is less of a liability to them.
And and the question I don't know, Penny, you probably know better just for everybody's sake. The proposal is to take out that current old line. And replace it with a bigger line, new line, bigger line, all those kinds of things. Is that? Is that a value add? For the city in choosing their option because it's. Going to. Give us a better pipe, new pipe coming into the the lift station.
Yes, a big pay new pipe is always beneficial to the city. You know, to the residents, yes, it's a a new pipe. So it is more watertight. No, it is a better option than having an old line. But. We are losing storage, in my opinion, in the existing station because. You know, they're they're saying it's three minutes different in pumping time. Uh, and that's true, but three minutes of sewage in somebody's basement is three minutes of sewage and a lot of sewage can come in in a seven inch rain in three minutes. Uh, so, um, I. Don't want to say that it's not a viable option. I think it is an option. And I think it could work. But I don't think that it's what we were looking to get from the beginning. And I don't know that just because it's less of a liability for them and it's their mistake, that the city should accept that. Liability or lesser liability to go with a product that is not what we intended to have from the beginning.
Luke, am I allowed to say? Regarding this? Penny, you you want to go back to that would and and should?
That that's yours. You go with.
When we, when I first heard the presentation. It's like I I called him out. I called out Kurt Zerlani and Serena. Is. This going going to the west. They mentioned. It should, hey, what was it? It should, it could. Whatever stuff. Whereas if you pull the one out of the existing, when I wanted to just put that to remove it, it would. And I'm not to me should is like, yeah, maybe. Would is more definite of what. That's that's all I gotta say.
The the thing I would say with that from a liability standpoint is if they're proposing that option of replacing the pipe. And they go through that process and it does not actually fix it. Then a hundred percent they're gonna be responsible for. The process of removing the by the lift station, all those kinds of things. I'm not telling you what to do from, I mean, there's a weighing across. Those kinds of things. I'm just saying. That. If they, you're sand poor and Charlie, if they try it and it doesn't work. Then. They will have to go through that and that's gonna be all that. And if they try to walk at that, then then we'll deal with that accordingly.
Well, I think. I have tagged off. I think that the issue to that would be the station is going to work either way in a normal daily flow. The question is what happens when we have. Big rains. That's that's our issue now. And. That's when those three minutes come into play or when the storage comes into play because. That's that's when we need them to. You know, be able to pump away more water. I on a average day, you know, those pumps hardly run there. You know, I say hardly run. They they run a good amount. That's not true. They run a good amount, but they are. Far less than they're running. You know, I think they today, for instance, ran two hours each. Until the last twenty four hours. During those rains. They were running. Eighteen to twenty hours a day each. So there's a a big difference in. A normal daily flow and for what I can see what Stumpy said, what it happens is, well, it's it's it worked every day. You just couldn't handle the rain. But there's no going back to how would the extra storage have worked? From the beginning, you know, if we had what was designed. Should have been designed from the start.
Didn't that guy also say though, like that seven train that we had? Did he say that? This probably wouldn't even take.
Yeah, they're not designing it for seven inch training. You can't design it for seventy.
Right, exactly. Yeah. So just my thing on like the three minutes and stuff like that when people's basements getting destroyed and things like that, I mean. I feel like. If we give them the option where we. Haven't put in that new line of like, well, you know, it was a. Two hundred year rain, you know, it's not gonna happen. You know what I mean? I I feel like every rain we get, it's like, oh, that was a hundred year storm or whatever it was. I mean. I mean, I don't, everybody else feel like that? I mean, everybody's like, oh, that was. Right? Um, so I feel like then they're like, well. You know, that's just a stored brain. Sorry about your luck. I think they're just gonna throw it right back at us and. To where they will be stuck with that. Don't you think?
My my impression would be is that no matter which option, even if it was as designed and stuff like that. The likelihood of it, you know, keep up with a six or seven inch rain. Either way is probably low. And they're gonna say that that's an inherent fault in all design to that they like that that. Any of those stations on this will go back.
I I agree with that, but we're talking when there's an in train. A two in train. Station out there now. In the existing station. Was struggling for that to keep up with those. And that was one of the reasons to. They're trying to get a new station so that we have more efficient pumps. We are, you know, making sure that we have a bigger force main, a way to pump more water. So now we've taken that, thrown it back into another option. You know, we. In my opinion, if we're gonna go with looking at the sewer line to the west. I would not feel comfortable with it without another engineer within that. I just would not.
That's what I was gonna ask. Is there a way for us to? To basically. Essentially build them to have a second opinion on the engineering of this due to the conflict of them being a direct party that's. Like responsible for the liability of it?
Um, we could ask that if they reimburse us for it. Uh, but then we'd have to hire that engineer to get it. Double check all of these kinds of things. And meanwhile, it's gonna sit idle for that period of time. So. Yes. Whether or not they would agree to pay for it outright or. Would agree to reimburse us, that will be up. We that we need to approach them with it. But either way, the city could. Uh. Approve hiring a secondary engineer. To look into this and come up, you know, make sure. That the recommendation that TWM's given here is. What that engineer would do.
I just feel like it's like. I feel like you're gonna definitely say the thing that protects your yourself. And so that's hard. It's hard. That's why I asked that question when they were here. It is like. And then to try and, I guess, push our back against the wall and say, well, if you go for the option that we don't want you to, then like, then it's on you. Eh, I don't really feel like that's right. And it kind of makes me question even more if they're suggesting the right thing. For us.
That would be up to council to. Rather than make a decision to which option would be. To approach TWM about getting a second opinion at us.
I would say even if. TWM isn't willing to pay for that, I think it is the city's best interest to to do that. If we're paying for it. I don't know that we even need to ask them to pay for it, whatever hours. You know, the engineer would say it takes them five hours to look at it, you know. I think it would be well worth our five hours of pay to have someone else look at it. I'm not an engineer, as I've said numerous times, however. I've dealt with this removal station for thirty seven years. And I can tell you that. I have great concern. About about. In not having the depth that it should have originally had.
I feel like if their insurance teams that they are responsible for, if we. I feel like it would be. Wise to have another engineer look at it and then simply. Send them the invoice for it and say that they said they were. They messed up. Well, you messed up and it led us to have to get a second opinion.
Only thing may be finding an engineer that's willing to, yeah.
Go against that.
Yeah. Uh, now, the only thing that they come about is. They've already pretty much acknowledged. An error in calculation. Uh, so we're not asking the engineers to. Double check whether or not they messed up or asking them about. What option or is maybe there a third option that? Is not being seen. Um, but then. Basically, the direction from the council for tonight would be. To look for a. An engineer who's willing to do the second look. And then at the next meeting, hopefully we have that name into the buyer. We'll approve hiring. That engineer for the second look.
If the council's heard everything, anybody have, wanna make a motion on anyone?
Can I ask a question before? Can we not approve? To have another engineer look at it without coming back with that engineer's name? Like, can they not approve that tonight? So that it can be looked at in the next. Two weeks that it could be done. We're not waiting on another meeting to come back to voting.
You could authorize the mayor within his executive. Purchasing as long as the cost is only lower than his specified. Amount. To. Um, potentially to hire them. But then the council needs to approve that hiring, expand the sure evidence.
And what's, do you know what the estimated cost? Of an engineer come out and look at that would be? Is then we can make a motion and put that cap, something around that in that.
I do not, I don't know. We could look at. You know.
What would be paid engineers to ask for some of these?
I've never asked for a second opinion on anything to sort it out there. So I I honestly do not know. Uh, there may be a contract back here that I could pull one out, but I would. I would guess you're probably talking somewhere between. Seventy five and a hundred dollars an hour.
So we are sort of looking at. Two thousand, three thousand dollar. We're looking at ten thousand.
I think you're probably, based on. My experience, you're probably. More than five, probably maybe ten. The way some of these engineers.
I would make a motion that be authorized the mayor. To seek out engineer with the cap of ten thousand dollars.
Anyone want to second that? Then I'll serve up it. All right, any more discussion? Okay, Roll Paul Blaine.
Smith.
Yes.
Washington. Belkey?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Cornish?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Marcinkowski?
No.
Okay, that's it. We'll move on to new business. Did you come out for a reason this term?
I did.
Yeah.
All right. Take you back to what you said earlier, six one eight Inc. Over on four oh two South Addison. They did clothes. They are getting to work. They are our first business district grant, so. Look for that. They've already done a lot over there already. You'll see like the tree's gone. They're clearing a bunch out of there. Uh, so keep an eye on that one. But we're here for Paul today. So he's applied for the ten thousand max and I think you all should have. One of these little ones. But I just want to run through real quick because I guess it was posted online. So then there's always questions from the media. So just to run down uh, applicants. What qualifies you for this? Uh, building property must be located and designated as a Lebanon business district, which is. Uh, must be a taxable commercially zoned property. It is. Uh, absent kid must be property owner or legal tenant. Doesn't, must be financial good standing with city, county, state. He is. Uh, hasn't received one in the past, is in the new. And he's not a tax exempt. So and then all of the work is within the scope of the things that you can do with a business grant. So that business grant money comes from our business district sales tax that was created. And this is our first year with the business district grant. So there's fifty fifty thousand dollars, five zero, in that account for these grants. They are first come, first served. They're not competitive, so there's no favoritism or somebody's getting it because, you know. So and so knows this person and issues. Apply for it. If you qualify, if your work qualifies, it goes for a vote. So. And then saying that, so if he gets it tonight, that leaves thirty thousand in there. And if you're on the fence, if you want to get one of these, you want to apply, do so sooner than later. Uh, then the cutoff is February first for this year's. And then it doesn't have to be a big job like that. So these are fifty percent uh, reimbursement grants. And it can be twenty bucks up to ten thousand. I mean, if you're like. I want to paint my door, but I need help buying paint. If it helps acutify the area, if it helps, you know, resell value. We're open to it. So that's just a little bit about that. And then you guys have read through Paul's proposal. So that's just a little bit about that. And then you guys have read through Paul's proposal. Do you have any questions about his in particular or question?
Well, where is the decorative fencing going to go along the curb?
Uh, it was already existing, we took it down because trees die. And, uh. I guess Cody's working with third phones to replace the trees and then once the trees are. Put in, then we'll replace the brick and it'll put the fence back up after we fix the fence. So that's decorative fencing.
Like the fence that goes along curb side?
Correct.
Sure, Jim was the black decorative fence that was right there. We took it out so that we didn't destroy. Historic valued fence and, and then have to get it rebuilt. Uh, it's easier to take four bolts out than it was to lift trees over fence generally.
Believe it or not, twenty-five years ago, uh. We moved to town, I, I'm Paul Crumpsey, uh, live at, uh, Three Fox More in Lebanon. But we own two thirties, I said, on the street, which is previously known as Dr. Jazz, still is known as Dr. Jazz. Uh, we came here opening June seventh, two thousand two. Uh, we got permission to put the brick along the street, so from the curb to the. Sidewalk is city property. But we got permission to put up the, the, the brick columns and then the fencing and the brick. And then the city put in the trees. So we're trying to get that back to normal. Uh, not quite sure why the trees died. But, uh, they're gonna be replaced, so we'll fix that back up. So that's part of that.
And just to head that off, we are working with arborists and we, we, we checked resources online with Arbor Day, so don't come at us. Things about trees and what you think we should have or don't have. We are working with actual arborists.
Many hours.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Will you be reopening Dr. Jazz?
That's a question that everybody wants to.
We want you to open it back up. Everybody wants you to open it up.
Well, today, uh, if you can see me today, I raced over here, I was doing concrete with my son. Uh, I'm not as young as I used to be, so I can't be on my fetus along as I used to be. So, um. We go back and forth with that, uh, personally, whether our family's gonna open it back up again or it's for sale now. Um, but, uh, you can see a picture of the right behind you. Of what it was, I think that was old Doc Freshour. We are the fifth owners in a hundred and seventy-five years. And we moved here twenty-six years ago. And that is, believe it or not, the oldest soda fountain in the United States. It's crazy to think that it's eleven in the law. So, um.
Should open it back up.
We very much consider it, we've considered it many times. Well, that wasn't part of the stipulation, um, but we do wanna bring it back. I mean, we, when we moved here, we put all our money there. We didn't get any grants. We didn't get any TIF money, we didn't do any of that. We just put our. Hard earned money in there, ran it for almost twenty years. Covid shut us down. It wasn't our choice to close down. We didn't get one penny of Covid money. Not one penny. And, uh, so I was just tired of dealing with the restrictions. And so if this ever happens again, make sure you, as aldermen, uh, understand the restrictions were. A very difficult, uh, on us. Uh, it was actually almost up to two years before we could have more than seven people in that business. So after from March fifteenth to, uh, to October, we did curbside, which we're losing money every month. You can't do that. We were used to having two, three hundred people in there a day, you know? So, even a long story short, we closed it up and I said, I'm not reopening until, uh, till the restrictions are done, but they lasted almost two years. And I was close to being retiring anyway. And so when that happened and we didn't get any Covid money, I'm like. I'm just gonna close it down until we decide what to do next. Well, now it's been five years, you know? So it doesn't seem like five years. I've enjoyed myself, actually, quite frankly. Uh, I enjoy myself there. But I just don't know if I could do it as many hours as I did, so I have a number of my children have talked about reopening it back up. As Dr. Jazz again, so that's been a, uh, believe me, we, we loved it, we still love it, but I just had to figure out if it's best for my family. So, uh, so that's the answer. But I do wanna bring it back to where it was. And this, these grants are good. Um, and they're, they'll be well used. I mean, that's. I'm trying to get it back to the original of what we did, uh, originally twenty-five years ago, so. That's, that'd be a big help.
Okay, thanks.
Just to hedge concerns again, so. With all these grants, this is documented work, there, it is permitted, it goes with the ordinances and it is inspected. Trying to think of all the things that we get.
Did council have any more questions? Okay.
Yes, sort of questions, sort of a, a heads up, I guess. Um, and first off, uh, don't really know yet, but I've been, back in the day when Dr. Jazz was open, had good food in there, I loved it too at Christmas. And I would totally support this. Except I've heard that maybe, uh, you're under consideration for the vacant council seat that was talked about earlier. I don't know if that's. Where that's at, but I would just say that I could only vote for one or the other, the grant or the being on the council, so. How would that factors in?
Makes no difference, not a voting member of the council.
Nah, I get that it's a, the timing's a coincidence and it's a first come, first served grant, but it's just.
I'll move the, uh, approval of the grant.
Okay.
I will, I'll ask. I have a question.
Yes.
Um. Don't take this the wrong way, but why should we approve this ten thousand dollar grant if you're not sure you're gonna reopen it? I mean, let's just say you don't reopen.
Yes. Well, because the building's brought back to the original. I mean, you want, the, I, I thought.
With our consideration, yeah.
Yeah, I thought the purpose of the grants were to make the buildings downtown.
Unification.
Unification downtown, not, not a stipulation whether you're gonna open or not open. I mean.
And if it does help in find the right buyer rather than open, then we, why would we not help with that?
These are all things that would encourage. A person to buy the building is they, they would have all of the cosmetics taken care of, would be dealing with that issue.
I think it just encourages altogether too, when you see somebody on your street that starts working on something or like. Maybe I could do a little something or I could do this job I've been waiting on and. You know, we've got the grants and we said they're first, they're first or first time, first time.
I, I mean, I, I feel the same way as her, um, but then again, thinking it like just kind of what George said, if you are wanting to sell. And I do think, like, and you said with, uh, it gets people motivated to start doing their stuff, um. I would love to see you guys reopen. I, like I said earlier, I, I wanna take my kids in there so bad. Ever since we moved here, I've never had a chance to even walk inside. Um, but I've heard the burgers were awesome and I think, uh.
RJ, do you wanna second?
Yeah, I seconded, all right.
Well, you know, let, let me just say this before you guys go. I have been the type of person that never wants to take anything from the government, definitely. Um, and this is government. Uh, when Covid hit. That's what changed my mind on that because when they hit, when Covid hit, they closed pretty much a lot of the small businesses. In my opinion, they were responsible for paying my bills, which they did not do. And if they, my gas, electric, I've been, my, my property taxes two years ago went up sixty percent. In one year, sixty percent. And for twenty-five years, I've done nothing but help the town, even when it hurt us. Uh, to do business. Like I, I put up billboards for, for months, uh, for almost two years. And I didn't put anything about Dr. Jazz on those. I put the town of Lebanon. And there was five other people in this town that went in with us to do that. So we've been a part of the community, we've been a part of building the business. We never asked for anything. Previous, I hesitated even to do this because I didn't wanna have to go through. Um, you know, like, um, you know, if they say this, for instance, you saying. Um, you know, if he runs for alderman or he wants to be alderman, then he got this because of that, or the banking is this and this and that. I thought, well, maybe I shouldn't do it because I always do things on my own anyway, so maybe I should just do stuff on my own again. But I'm like, you know what? The, I'm the type of person that gets hurt because I don't go ahead and ask for these things. And when we did the outside, it cost me twenty-five thousand dollars to do that. I had people pushing, push on me twenty-five years ago about putting up the fencing and putting the brick there. Putting the counter, I had pushed back back then by the city administrator. But I finally got approval of it by spending twenty-five thousand dollars to help the city's property. So I hesitated to even. Uh, agreed to run for alderman or be appointed as alderman because I'm like. I've been in business a long time. I, I hope my kids get in business. We own buildings. I just, I have no idea why people can't go along. And, um, like even tonight, seeing Dave here. I, I get why he's upset. I, I know this whole thing. But there's gotta be a, there's gotta be a way, this is part of the reason why I, I haven't opened up already. I'm gonna tell you, be perfectly honest. Is because we had an administration here before that was working against us. And I thought, if I have my own mayor working against us. Why would I put more money and more time into it when I can just retire? So the only reason why I would run for alderman or be appointed as alderman is not for this grant. I was doing this way before I was even asked to do that. But I thought. If I could help as alderman, maybe I would. I don't, I don't like sitting here until eight thirty. I just got done doing concrete all day, look at me. I just put a clean shirt on, ran over here. And I'm sitting here, I'm like, oh, maybe I made a mistake, but maybe.
But that goes, you know, there's a lot of talk about conflict of interest lately. It's a small town.
There's always.
It's just gonna happen. I mean, yes, she works for V O S. How many people on this council bank locally? I mean, one of our other banks has a former employee's husband is on the board. One of the banks has, her husband works here now. I, it, it's just going to happen.
It's a small town.
And it's like, we're trying to be as transparent as possible. I was there when the proposals were open. For us, it was a no brainer, when we're considering only the financial health of the city. Our job is to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and that's the only thing that's on the table. Changes are.
George, you made your motion.
Yeah, okay. Who's the question?
Okay, second.
Second, okay. No more discussion, right? Okay, roll call please.
Washington. Belkey?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Cornish?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Marcinkowski?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
That's it, that's it. Okay, finally, the, the last thing on the new business, uh, discuss approved Lebanon High School twenty twenty-five homecoming parade route. The Thursday, October second, twenty twenty-five.
You all already have it, you see it?
Yeah. Go ahead.
I recommend that we approve the twenty twenty-five homecoming route.
Second.
For the second of October. It's the same thing as Ben's since Will Osser Raptor came to this town.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Belkey?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Cornish?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Marcinkowski?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Washington?
Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, uh, we're done. Have a motion to adjourn.
Move it through.